Good evening. We're going to get started here. I'd like to call and order the City West Bend Licensing Board for March 7th. Note that we do have a quorum, and we have three items on our agenda. The first being approval of the minutes, the regular licensing board meeting minutes for February 21st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, so they'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have two agenda items for consideration, the first being an operator's license for Samantha Marie Gossett, and we'll have a presentation by the chief.
Good evening. This is somewhat of a unique situation. Ms. Gossett has some things in her background that we just wanted to bring to the board's attention. It does not rise to the level that we're seeking a denial, but wanted to make sure that you were aware as you made your decision whether or not to approve. Hopefully, the case is that it's all for naught, but if there's some things in the future, we'll have this so our due process is done. Ms. Gossett has applied for the operator's license for the city. If she's granted this, she'll be in a position of responsibility regarding customers purchasing alcoholic beverages, control of employing, the employee license premise, and the conduct of the people within that establishment. In order to make sure she would be a responsible server, we conducted a background and found two arrests and convictions that were concerning. The first was on June 12th of 2020. Ms. Gossett was arrested for OWI by the Washington County Sheriff's Department. She was, after failing field sobriety, was, had blood alcohol concentration of .218. She also had Delta-9 marijuana in, found to be an active ingredient marijuana in her blood. She was found guilty on September 9th of 2020 of operating while intoxicated, open intoxicants in a motor vehicle, and inattentive driving. On 8/16/21, Ms. Gossett was located by a West Bend police officer at 4:47 PM in the West Bend Riverwalk, 100 block of Veterans Avenue, after being called in by a passing citizen noting two intoxicated females. Responding officer identified Ms. Gossett as being one of the two females involved. She and her friends had been listening to music and sharing a bottle of alcohol. She was issued a citation for consuming intoxicants in public. Ms. Gossett was found guilty of the violation by the Mid-Murray Municipal Court on October 7th of 2021. Those were the two violations that we found. Enough for us to be concerned to bring it to your attention, so it's on record. We, again, just to clarify, we are not recommending denial.
Thank you, Chief. Is Ms. Gossett in audience? Then I'll open it up if there's any questions.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve, but with the contingent to pay the fine that she has an outstanding fine yet.
Good. Now, second tip then. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, stated by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just have one comment.
Yes.
I was going to say, she would have to pay her fine, her delinquent fine anyways, prior to being issued her license, so she'd still have to be paying it even if she wasn't brought above the board.
Got it. Sounds good.
And I will...
You voting in favor?
I will vote in favor as well.
Okay. Got it. That passes, and then we'll move on to three. Original Class B beer license for Theron Wanta of Stingers Gold and Recreation LLC, Stingers Gold and Recreation at 601 East Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions to this one? Hearing none. All those in favor, so they'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the licensing board, I adjourn by the call of the chair, and then I would like to call and order the City West Bend Common Council meeting for March 7th at 6:30. Note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen present accounted for. Please join us to rise with a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like we have 19 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the regular common council meeting minutes for February 21st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Moll. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, so they'll be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll move on to one I'm sure everybody is all here for. We have presentations. We're going to start off with our Police Department Citizen Appreciation Awards, and then we'll be swearing in some firefighters after that, but we'll start off with the Police Department Citizen Appreciation Awards, and let the chief take it away.
Thank you. Captain Pocorsky will be taking my long-held place of reading off our awards. He's very excited to do that tonight, but very gracious thank you for giving us this time to honor our citizens. We talk very much about protecting and serving the community, and we're blessed to be a police department that has a community that also abides by that philosophy. So Sir Robert Peel said, "The police are the people, the people are the police," and you're going to see some great examples of public servants doing just that, caring about their community and keeping it safe by helping us to do the same. Captain?
All right. Tonight, we have several Citizen Appreciation Awards, citizens that we'd like to honor, so I'm going to read off the recipient's name, ask them to step forward and stand by the chief to receive their award. Keith Belger, if Keith is in the building. There he is. Keith, if you'll step up by the chief and the mayor. On April 29th, 2021, Keith was at Fleet Farm getting gasoline when he observed a male driver slumped over in a nearby vehicle. Keith observed a needle in the man's hand and recognized that the man was likely suffering an opioid overdose and requested staff at the gas station get him an AED. Keith removed the needle from the man's hand and pulled the male from the vehicle. Keith then performed CPR until officers arrived. Keith notified the officers it was likely an opiate overdose and Narcan was administered. The man regained consciousness and was transported to a hospital for further treatment. Keith is commended for his willingness to get involved in helping to save the man's life. Christine M. Mahoney. I don't know if she made it tonight. She was unsure if she would be able to make it. Doesn't look like she's here, but I will read off Christine's award. On 6/25/21, Christine turned in a wallet she found in the road, which contained $361 in cash. Christine advised she hadn't opened the wallet, but the large amount of cash was clearly visible as it was protruding through the slit of the folded wallet. The wallet belonged to a 17-year-old juvenile who was very grateful to have his money returned to him. Christine is commended for her honesty and citizenship. Officer Daniel J. Pabich. Did I say it right?
You did.
All right. Two for two, Safari. On July 21st of 21, a West Bend police officer attempted to stop, a traffic stop, on a vehicle near the downtown. The vehicle failed to stop and a short pursuit ensued. The driver eventually stopped his vehicle and fled on foot along Cedar Street towards North Main Street. The officer exited the squad car and yelled to the driver, "Police, stop." Off-duty Germantown Police Officer Daniel J. Pabich was in the area, heard the officer's orders, and grabbed the subject as he ran past, directing him to the ground. Officer Pabich, knowing a fellow officer needed help, placed himself on duty and intervened. Officer Pabich's quick thinking and situational awareness helped prevent a wanted subject Okay, this one's going to be tough. Susan Lociano and Shoah Janasieck. And you can correct me if you're here. Oh, okay. On August 9th, 21, Susan found $1,800 in a bank envelope in the parking lot of Walgreens South and turned it over to Walgreens staff for safekeeping. Manager Shoah Janasieck contacted the bank on the envelope and found the customer that had earlier in the day taken out that exact amount of cash. Due to both Susan and Shoah's actions, the money was returned to its owner. Susan and Shoah are commended for their honesty and citizenship. Joel E. Turner. His wife, Antoinette Turner?
Antoinette?
No? Okay. Joel Turner. On August 13th of 2021, Joel reported three males possibly involved in a drug transaction near the Eisenbaum Trail. Joel was able to describe the males and their direction of travel well enough that they were located a short time later. Joel was able to pinpoint each male's seated location in the vehicle. Joel's accurate description and attention to detail allowed officers to request appropriate charges against the correct suspects. Joel's tip led to the arrest of all three subjects. Joel is commended for his willingness to get involved and work towards getting drugs off the street. Angela Ish cannot be with us tonight, but on August 19th, 21, Angela Ish called the Police Department to advise that she observed a male subject on the Eisenbaum Trail near the Moa Museum who had matched the description of a recently issued green alert for a missing and endangered veteran. Officers responded and located the man, thanks to Angela's call. The man had been missing for over 24 hours and was dehydrated and hungry when located. Angela is commended for her willingness to get involved and her care and compassion for a fellow citizen. Jordan M. Shaw. Jordan? No. On December 8th of 2021, Jordan Shaw was driving in the area of River Road and Decor- River Road and Decorah Road and observed a large amount of money lying on the street. Jordan collected the money, contacted the Police Department in hopes of finding the rightful owner. The owner was identified as the West Bend East High School Basketball Booster Club, and the money and proceeds, or was proceeds, from their booster activities. Thanks to Jordan's honesty and citizenship, the money was returned to the booster club Evelyn Lawrence Gonzalez. Evelyn here? There she is. Hi. Sneaking up behind me. Stop that. Evelyn is a school aide that works with Spanish-speaking students as part of the English as a second language program at Badger School. Evelyn was working one-on-one with a Spanish-speaking student when he had a seizure. Evelyn quickly activated the medical response team and took the initiative to contact the student's father, who also only speaks Spanish. Evelyn rode in the ambulance to provide translation services in the ambulance and at the hospital. Evelyn remained at the hospital until relieved by a Spanish-speaking doctor. Evelyn's quick thinking ensured the student received the medical help he needed, assisted his, in his care, through her translation services, and ensured the boy's parents understood his needs. Evelyn is commended for her quick action and compassion for her student and James L. Slaton could not be with us tonight, but on January 12th, 2022, James and his wife were walking their dogs near Silverbrook School when he observed a handgun lying on the side of the road in a snowbank. James immediately called the police. The gun was found to be loaded with a live round chambered in it. James's actions prevented a school-aged child from locating the gun. James is commended for his willingness to get involved in his work at getting a gun off the streets of West Bend. Jeremiah Schwabe and Benjamin Schwabe? Come on forward. Benjamin told his father, Jeremiah, that his bus driver was acting strange and had been driving poorly while taking kids home from school. Jeremiah contacted Rightway Bus Service and reported Benjamin's observations. The bus driver was located on the route by officers who determined that the driver was having a medical emergency. The driver was transported to the hospital for treatment. Benjamin and Jeremiah are commended for their willingness to see something and say something. Their quick actions protected the community. Richard Lasecki. I know he's here someplace. Come on forward. On January 13th of 2020, 2022, at 1:20 in the afternoon, Richard Lasecki had walked into Fleet Farm when he noticed a subject with a cart full of merchandise, including clothes and tools, exit the store. When the subject exited the store, the security alarm activated. Richard quickly contacted Fleet Farm staff and informed them of his observation. A Fleet Farm employee and Richard went into the parking lot and retrieved the license plate of the vehicle involved in the theft. The suspect had to leave about half of the merchandise behind to leave the lot. Vehicle information was obtained, passed along to the West Bend Police Department. The vehicle was located and stopped by the Jackson Police Department. The stolen items were located and recovered in the vehicle. Drugs, drug paraphernalia were also located in the vehicle, leading to additional charges to the two vehicle occupants. The total amount of merchandise stolen was over $2,200. Richard's quick thinking and assistance in the case assisted with recovering more than $2,200 worth of stolen property and the seizure of drugs, methamphetamine, and other paraphernalia. We have several people who assisted us with our operating while, or while intoxicated enforcement. If, I'm going to read off the list of names, and if you are here, please step forward. April Abshire, Timothy Baumhart, Thomas Beck, Lindsay Cornelius, Joshua Madison, Jeremiah McNaul, Eva Rodriguez, Lisa Rodriguez, Shelley Rome Strong, Clayton Schaefer, Jason Stendel, Ronald Swazinski, Kristen Tansey, Angela Towers, Jody Wojcowski, Eric Zietler, Jessica Zier, and Logan Zitlow. In the past year, these citizens contacted the Police Department after observing suspected impaired drivers in the city of West Bend. These citizens either followed the vehicle while on the phone with the police dispatcher or obtained enough information to allow the police to stop the vehicle. In each of these cases, the drivers were either intoxicated or impaired by drugs and were arrested for OWI. These citizens are commended for their willingness to get involved. Their actions helped prevent vehicle crashes, serious injuries,
Thank you, and congratulations again to everybody who was present or that we mentioned. You know, our, our city truly is only as strong as the community that we have to support us, and all of you are clear examples of that support right there, so thank you so much. We will move on to our items two, three, and four for presentations, which are the oath of office for firefighter/paramedic Peter Galain, firefighter/EMT Kyle Hilgendorf, and firefighter/EMT Antonio Garola, and we'll have presentations by Chief Kudick.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to do a swearing-in. This is an exciting time for these new firefighters. We talk often about how hard it is to recruit new firefighters and new paramedics, and how the number of applicants is always down, but you're going to find out tonight that the three gentlemen that are getting sworn in tonight, top-quality people, top-quality individuals, are going to make great assets to the West Bend Fire Department, and are also great assets to our community, so welcome.
Peter, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Peter Galain.
Aye, Peter Galain.
Having been appointed...
Having been appointed.
As firefighter/paramedic...
As firefighter/paramedic.
In the city of West Bend...
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County...
Washington County.
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin...
State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So Peter tonight is being pinned by his nephew Bobby. Peter's first day was February 21st of 2022. He grew up in Hartford and still currently resides in Hartford. He graduated from Hartford High School. He completed his paramedic through Moraine Park Technical College. He holds many various other certifications that are valuable in the fire service. He has previous fire and EMS experience from Hartford and North Fond du Lac Fire Department.
Peter, if you want to introduce who's with you tonight?
Yes, this is my nephew Bobby over here. I couldn't think of anybody better to pin him tonight. Like two peas in a pod.
Okay, thank you.
Kyle, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Kyle Hilgendorf.
Aye, Kyle Hilgendorf.
Having been appointed...
Having been appointed.
As firefighter/EMT...
As firefighter/EMT.
In the city of West Bend...
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County...
Washington County.
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin...
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Tonight, Kyle's going to be pinned by his grandma, Donna. Kyle's first day was February 28th, 2022. He grew up in Menominee Falls and still currently resides in Menominee Falls. He graduated from Menominee Falls High School. He earned an associate degree in fire protection technician from Mid-State Technical College in Wisconsin Rapids. He is completing his paramedic through Waukesha County Technical College with a projected May graduation date. He was recently enrolled in an internship at Western Lakes Fire Department, and he has previous fire experience from Hull Fire Department and Marshfield Fire Department.
Aye, Antonio Garola.
Aye, Antonio Garola.
Having been appointed...
Having been appointed.
As firefighter/EMT...
As firefighter/EMT.
In the city of West Bend...
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County...
Washington County.
But have not yet entered...
But have not yet entered. But have not yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof...
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support...
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin...
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Antonio's going to be pinned by his wife, Nicole. No drawing blood, please. Antonio's first day will be March 21st, 2022. He grew up in West Bend and currently resides in the town of Farmington. He graduated from West Bend West High School. He currently is completing his paramedic through Moraine Park Technical College with a projected May graduation date also. He also holds many various other certifications that are very valuable in the fire service. He was a master auto mechanic for 19 years at a local car dealership, and he has previous fire and EMS experience with Fillmore Fire Department, where he had the rank of EMS lieutenant, so welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Welcome to stay. We have more exciting items. Who brought the lawyer? We're just making sure that we're streaming and we're recording still, so just one moment. We're just making sure that we're streaming and we're recording still, so just one moment. Just making sure we're live for our televised audience. You good? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
So it is streaming live on cable, so Spectrum and AT&amp;T. But the internet stream is not working right now. Working on that.
Got it. Technical difficulties. But anyways, we will continue with our public meeting here. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to jump down to item number 13 as we do have some members of the audience who are here for that item as well. So that is discussion of banner policy for city-owned light poles. This was brought up. We have a couple. Downtown Association are the main users of those downtown light poles. We've had two requests from other nonprofits. So that's what instigated this discussion, and I'll let Ian start us off.
So the downtown light poles are currently utilized principally by the Art Walk banners. There's also flags that get put up throughout the year. And then the other one is the jeans that are put up by Friends of Abuse family for domestic abuse. The flags, I don't think there's any need to specifically discuss putting up American flags on the poles downtown. The other two are projects that are sponsored or supported by the city. The Art Walk is done between the city and the Downtown West Bend Association. You can see the old Art Walk banners up in City Hall after they get taken down from out on Main Street. There's currently a few requests to use them by other outside organizations. The concern I have about that is creating what's called a public forum. So, once you create a public forum, the ability of the municipality to restrict them and the use of the city property becomes very complicated because now you get into significant freedom of speech issues. You know, so for example, our boards that we have at City Hall that we allow, you know, any nonprofit group to post on, we can't restrict the nonprofit that posts there. If you check the box for the requirement, you can post your board, you post your banner. If we open the downtown light poles up to any organization who requests it, we now have created a limited public forum, but still a public forum. And now when there's requests that may not be as well-accepted in the city, we have a very limited ability to, you know, pick and choose what it is. It's basically a first-come, first-served type of a policy. So when you get a request and it doesn't really matter, you're going to end up with people quite upset, I would imagine, about certain things that get put up on the polls downtown. If we don't open that door, we don't have to worry about that. Like I said, right now, it's essentially programs that are sponsored by, facilitated by the city downtown for very limited purposes. It's not a free, it's not an open door that is open to anybody, any comer. And so my recommendation is just leave it as is because once we open that door, it's really hard to close it.
But as is is really without a policy, right? We don't have a set in stone policy that says.
We don't have, correct, we don't have a policy that allows for it. We don't have a policy that, you know, restricts it. We have just restricted it as city-owned light poles, no different than, I mean, it's essentially the same policy as if I wanted to put something up on, you know, well, the city doesn't own the light poles. But if the city owned the light pole in front of my house, the same idea would apply.
That you couldn't.
Correct, correct.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Ian.
Thoughts?
Would the same restrictions apply to city-owned buildings? Like if someone would want to erect a mural or something on the side of a city-owned building? Would that policy or lack of policy still?
So, I think it depends on the context. For example, if the city went out as part of the bathhouse and hired somebody to paint a mural of all of the sites of West Bend, I mean, that's a city-commissioned piece of art. If the city opened it up and said, hey, we're going to allow anybody who puts, who makes a request to paint a mural somewhere, you know, to put up, it's the similar discussion to what just happened in Mequon with their signage. It's a little bit different nuance to it. But if the city opens that door and says, hey, anybody can paint this, we have very limited ability to restrict that, including to some degree profanity, because again, profanity is free speech. We all learned that through the banners and signs that people put up after the last election, that we have very limited ability to rein that in. So again, same with murals. I would not recommend a policy where, you know, any community group could put a mural up wherever they wanted.
Yeah, I have a real hard time trying to open this up. You're going to hurt feelings on some nonprofit organizations. And I think what we have, if it's a city function, I have no problem with that up there. But as far as opening it up and having nonprofits or anyone put banners up, it's absolutely, I am definitely against it. I am not in favor of it at all.
Thank you. Yep?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with John. I really, I do want to apologize to the folks that have made those requests, but it does seem like we're opening Pandora's Box. Are you looking for a motion?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
I do want to be respectful of an audience. I know we had some people that wanted to speak on this item, so if anybody would like to, you're welcome to. One at a time. You just state your name and your address and the organization maybe you're with.
Jeff Schwitz, 615 Lenora Drive, West Bend, 53090. I am with the West Bend Sons of the American Legion.
My name is Paul Sype. I live at 609 West Mulberry Drive. And I'm also with the Sons of the American Legion and the American Legion.
We understand what you're saying, keeping in mind that the American flags that are put through the town is through the West Bend Legion Post 36. Our thoughts of why this came up with us bringing it up is, and Paul will talk about it in a minute, is we've had 28 West Bend high school students that were killed in action. And Scott Mindle pulls a wall in the Memorial Day Parade every year with the 28 students on there. And Paul went through his hometown recently, and this was what we were bringing up.
Yeah, I'm a US Navy veteran. I'm not from here. I've been living here for 16 years with my wife. We've made this our home, raising our three children. We saw these banners going through Pittsboro, Indiana, and I thought it was the most patriotic and respectful thing I've seen. They're members of the military that gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country. They have them up on the poles going through the Main Street, and I sent some pictures back to my friends in the Legion Hall and said, this is a phenomenal idea. And I'm not sure why we don't try to do something like this. And I respect everybody's opinion and thank you for letting us bring this to your attention. But while you make that decision, I'd like you to remember that we started this meeting saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And these folks died, so we have this capability to come here and talk about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, gentlemen.
Hello, I am Thomas Chaney, 1408 Trillium Court here in West Bend.
I'm Tony Perez, 5194 Beaver Dam Road.
And you both represent?
We are from the Kiwanis Early Risers Club. And actually, I think it was a similar program to seeing the, you know, the soldiers, the banners of the soldiers going through another town. And basically, the idea is what we were hoping to do is have up, give parents the chance for graduating seniors to be able to put up their senior photo, you know, throughout the, throughout Main Street, hanging from the posts as a way for us to have a fundraiser and for the parents to have a chance to kind of honor and celebrate their child's graduation. So, that is that. Thank you much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to speak on the same? Yep.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gina Beertser, 1736 Valley Road, Tretton, West Bend. So I am also the executive director for the Downtown West Bend Association. We are the ones who have been putting up the banners. This is our 10th year for putting the banners up. I really appreciate the ideas of why you'd want to put them up. I know the veterans. I talked to the SAL. I am on my way there right after this, so I'll meet you guys there. But these banners are a full community effort. They're done by artists within the community and beyond. These banners have been, like I said, up for 10 years. They're bringing in business or they're incorporating business or including businesses. They're including the artists in our community and building a cultural awareness to art. And they're also just helping our community to, I guess, beautify what we already have going on downtown. 10 years ago, we had an instance where the baskets were taken off of the poles, the flower baskets, and nothing was there to replace them. So these banners were put up in a way to make an outdoor gallery and just to really beautify downtown. I have 16 students from the high school who are printing us banners, painting banners this year. I have two students that are in eighth grade over at Badger painting us banners. And then I have a lot of mom and daughters. I have artists that have come all the way as far as, I'm sorry, now I'm going to forget, East Troy. So it's really, it's all over that they're bringing, and they're doing this for free. Just to mention a few things that the guys had talked about. Yes, I love our veterans. I am a veteran. My son's a veteran. My daughter's in the military, so yeah, we're really good at that. I talked to Steve Rhodes today, and my suggestion was Veterans Drive. If that would be a great place to put veterans' memorial flags. I also talked to Steve about if this was something that we wanted to do, that I would absolutely assist in possibly figuring out an appropriate time to put that up. Maybe two or three weeks in July, around the Fourth of July, or two or three weeks around Memorial Day. And they had offered that they would help me pick them, take them down and everything. So that was the other part of that. I 100% agree that this is going to open up a can of worms. We have so many different nonprofit organizations, and I think this is going to become an issue, possibly a very large issue. And then to the Kiwanis, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate that you're always supporting the community. But it was my understanding that you were looking to do seniors, graduating seniors on those poles. I think that it becomes very exclusive because I was a printer prior to my position. I know these banners, full color, full banner, it's $110 apiece. You want to make a 20% profit off of that, you're looking at a $150 banner. And I can't tell you all these families can afford that. So wherever your line is, I'm absolutely willing to help you do yard signs, make a fundraiser, figure out something that way. But I just don't feel like you're going to get a good profit out of that. And like I said, most families, I had two graduate the same year. I couldn't afford 300 bucks. It wasn't happening. So, that's kind of all I had to say. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Gina. Any other comments from the public, Rick? Yes, sir. Alman Donick.
I understand it would be nice to put the veterans' banners up. But I don't want to see Nazi Party banners up either. And I don't want to see Church of Satan banners up. You name it, it can go up. And that is, I mean, it's all well and good to say, let's honor our veterans, and who can argue against that? But we can't ignore the consequences of honoring our veterans and what will follow after that. So there will just have to be some other way to do that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with the views that have been, that have been put forward by the council members. But the question I have, Ian, would, would we at some point as a council be able to come forward with some alternate plan that would be from the council as opposed to, in other words, could the council decide to honor veterans or honor something? In other words, would, if we do something else that's from the council that has the blessing of, from the city as opposed to somebody comes in and says, we do this?
So, I think there's room to work through some of that. The concern I have is we can't just veil a public forum in the terms of, oh, this is what the council is presenting. This is what the city is presenting. Right now, it's very limited usage. Like, I do not consider the putting up of the flags to be opening that door regardless. I mean, that's a standard decoration that would be placed no different than the holiday decorations that the city places downtown in cooperation with the bid and the other organizations that put it up. Right now, outside of that, it's the downtown Art Walk banners which has been put in, put up with the cooperation. You know, it's a co-op between the city and the Downtown West Bend Association, has been for 10 years, and was a direct replacement, as was pointed out, for the other decorative plantings that were taken down, I assume because of maintenance costs. And then there's one other limited use, which are the, you know, again, it's not a content-based one. It's literally just the jeans up in recognition of domestic abuse. And that's working with the police department for that, you know, that's through board representation from police officers on their board. If we start opening that door and picking and choosing, now we're definitely walking closer to that. I think there is a place that we can work with, maybe not in this specific one, but in another context to put up the flags to honor the veterans, and I think we can definitely explore that. But I don't know that this is the specific place to do that. Because I think it's starting to, it's all, it's all going to be a judgment call. It's all gray areas. And the further we move one way, the closer it becomes to a public forum. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would agree. I think it's honorable what you want to do, but we're definitely opening up Pandora's Box. If I could make a suggestion for the veterans, I would think Veterans Plaza would be a great place for those to be displayed. Maybe an option for you to look at. But I would agree. I think we stick with what we have.
Any other comments, suggestions? All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming out. And I will recess the common council to Public Works.
Good evening. I would like to call the Board of Public Works. We have three items on the agenda. We have the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Item number two, permission to award contract 21-13, Regner Park Beach House Remodeling Alternates 1A, 2, 3, and 4. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, John, and good evening, council. Excuse me. This evening, our department is requesting permission to award the Regner Park Beach House Remodeling Alternates 1A, 2, 3, and 4 to creative constructors. These alternates, plus a 3% contingency and a construction administration fee, will total an estimated $393,923. Community donations will support the costs associated with tonight's request. At this time, we would also like to take a little time and thank some of the individuals and organizations that helped make this remodeling project, this community project possible. The fundraising to support the remodeling of the beach house has been very impressive. We would like to personally thank Kevin Steiner of West Bend Mutual, Jay Chambeau and Jess Wilds for their dedicated efforts in leading the fundraising campaign. These community leaders work closely with the many different individual donors, foundations, and local companies that have committed to the renovations of this historic beach house. We would also like to recognize several of the specific donors that have made this project a reality. West Bend Mutual Charitable Fund has donated an impressive $260,000 towards this project. Delta Defense with a $200,000 investment. Thomas J. Rouse Family Foundation, $125,000. The Ziegler Family Foundation, $100,000. Thomas J. Rouse Family Foundation, $125,000. The Ziegler Family Foundation, $100,000. Oscar C. and Augusta Schlegel Foundation, $100,000. The West Bend Community Foundation, $98,500. The West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation, $80,000. Schlemmer Family Charitable Fund, $50,000. T-Mobile Hometown Grant, $50,000. National Exchange Bank Foundation, $40,000. Enchantment in a Park, $30,000. Sunrise Rotary, $26,000. Beth Ramsthal, $25,000. Bob Ramsthal, $25,000. Judy and George Prescott Family Foundation, $25,000. Westbury Bank, $25,000. The Regner Rejuvenation Group, $21,712. The Johnson Family Fund of $12,500. Horacom Bank, $10,000. And Commerce State Bank, $10,000. We thank you to those donors and the additional 80 donors that have committed to this project. Those 100-plus commitments have raised over $1.4 million to support the reconstruction of this historic beach house. Raising that amount of financial support in such a short time is a very impressive accomplishment. So we would like to say thank you to the entire community for stepping forward again and supporting a community project like the Regner Park Beach House, like they've done so many times with our park projects and other projects around the city. So thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Alderman Allen?
Yeah, this is taking care of everything now except for alternate five. So basically, we just won't have parking lot and roads.
Alternate five was the road leading in the parking lot, some concrete work around the building, and then an asphalt drive around the building. At some point in time, we will come back before common council, because we will need concrete around the building, the exterior of the building, and asphalt roadway around the backside of the building to facilitate enchantment in the park. These alternates this evening will finish the building itself, the structure itself. It's important that we get this process moving forward and get this done. Contractors on site, their subs are on site, they can continue working. Instead of roughing something in and leaving, they can continue their work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Again, I'd like to add also, thank you very much for all the donations from everyone. I mean, it's just amazing, the amount of people that step forward for this project. It is just fantastic. Great job by everybody. Item number three, memorandum of understanding between City of West Bend and Trail Edge Development.
Thank you. The proposed memorandum of understanding that is before you this evening is between the City of West Bend and Trail's Edge Development. Trail's Edge Development wishes to install a private trail connection from their development to the Riverwalk. This is basically gonna be a standard ADA compliant sidewalk from their development across city property that connects with the Riverwalk. Trail's Edge would be responsible for the installation, restoration, you know, with the installation and future maintenance, no removal, anything like that. Basically, they just want a nice sidewalk connection over to the Riverwalk from their development. This was reviewed, the MOU was reviewed by a city attorney. Also, this MOU was passed unanimously by the Park and Rec Commission at the February meeting. Thank you.
Second.
Any questions for Mike? Alderman Allen?
Will this be marked as a private access? In other words, are they going to restrict the public from coming off and going out to Forest Avenue?
Yep. Good question. Right now, there's no gates proposed or anything else like that. At some point in time, I could see maybe a small sign or something of that nature. Where this runs through, they're gonna have like a small private dog area on their property, things like that. So right now, it's just gonna be just a basic sidewalk connection. No fences, no gates, nothing like that at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
With no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
And with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. We have six items on the agenda. First up, we have approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee regular meeting from February 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. All right. For consideration, we have a resolution for correction of 2020 and 2021 taxes paid by NE Diffusions, Inc., and Jeff is gonna tell us about that. Good evening.
Welcome. Good to see you tonight. I'd like to just explain the correction. As we were doing the personal property rule this year, we discovered that we had a personal property account of Fusion Hair Studio that we discovered was assessed twice. It was also assessed as NE diffusion. So there are two tax bills, 2020 and 2021, and we're asking that the taxes be refunded to the property owner.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on that? Alderman Allen?
They paid both tax bills?
They paid both, yes, both yours, yeah. Both tax bills. They didn't realize it. We discovered it. We contacted them, and now we're asking it to be corrected, so.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Next, we have a resolution authorizing appropriation of funds for the Downtown Riverwalk West land acquisition. Mike?
All right. Thank you. In August 2020, the city was awarded a DNR stewardship grant to support the acquisition of two properties along the west riverbank of the Milwaukee River. These properties will support the development of the Riverwalk, including the underpass below Washington Street, provide for public parking, and the development of the accessible kayak and canoe launch. This evening, we are requesting the appropriation of $110,397 of stewardship grant funds to the expense account noted in the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions for Mike? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. We also have, we'll keep Mike up here, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the Eisenbahnen Trail Rehab and the retaining wall development project.
Thank you. In November of 2019, the city was awarded a DNR stewardship grant, or DNR recreational trails program grant in the amount of $25,087. The purpose of this grant was to fund the maintenance of the paved portion of the Eisenbahnen Trail, the city's portion of the trail. In early 2021, we received partial reimbursement for expenses for work that has been completed on the trail. This evening, we are requesting the appropriation of $13,970 to the expense accounts noted in the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions for Mike on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, we have a resolution approving carry forward appropriations from 2021 to 2022, and Carrie is here to tell us about that.
Good evening, everyone. I had attached two different documents for the 2021 carry forwards for the various funds. I have listed general fund, the debt service fund, taxi fund, and the room tax fund. Jay and I have reviewed all these lists and recommend that common council approve the amounts listed that I have, and also the documentation for the description. The general fund unaudited 2021 results is currently at a net surplus of $547,050. And with an additional $244,238 of the general fund, the carry forward amount will be funded through the undesignated fund balance account. After everything is calculated with the carry forward and the net surplus amount, the undesignated fund balance percentage is projected to be at 31.44% at the end of 2021. Are there any questions on the attachments at all?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? No one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And lastly, Carrie's gonna walk us through the item number six, unaudited 2021 general fund results.
Thanks again. I had attached the general fund revenues and the general fund expense reports for the fourth quarter of 2021. Again, these are unaudited figures as our annual audit begins this Wednesday on March 9. Overall, we ended the year with estimated net surplus of $547,050. And I had gone through a couple of the differences for the interest revenue, and then also higher expenses for the attorney and the landfill. At the end of 2021, our estimated undesignated fund balance compared to the 2022 budget that was passed will be at 31.44%.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other questions for Carrie on that? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. And with no further business before the Finance Committee, I will adjourn.
Hey, good evening once again. We're back in common council. We are on our consent agenda consisting of items five through 11.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Model and Kayler. Any questions on these? Hearing none. All those in favor should be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then our last agenda item for consideration is number 12, an operator's license for Samantha Marie Gossett. The recommendation was to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Model. Any questions on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval should be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's noted. And we're moving on to our closed session item, number 14, entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, Para 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed sessions for the loan agreement to developer's agreement with CORDA.
Motion to adjourn into closed session.
Thank you, Allen and Model. And if we could have a roll call vote.
Alderman Bushlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kayler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Aaronz?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Thank you. We will be resuming in just a little bit.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Thank you. We will be resuming in just a little bit.
Check.[128.39]
Yeah.
Not capable.
Now it's back on.
And we are reconvened to open session and on number 15, possible action regarding loan agreement and developers agreement with Cordova.
Motion to approve the proposed developers agreement.
Second. Thank you, Alan and Model. And in comments, questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you, and that passes.
Good stuff, Justin.
And we'll move on to reports. Number 16, report by Alderman Model regarding the Plan Commission meeting, which I wasn't there, so thank you for running that meeting. I heard it was very exciting.
I did. I had the pleasure of running the last Planning Commission meeting, and I think we set a record at four minutes.
You beat when Jed ran it.
Jed had the previous record of seven. Yeah, yeah. We actually got out of there before. We discussed the Shepherd, the Hills Church area out off of Wildwood. It's part of township now, and we'll be bringing a recommendation on annexation to the next council meeting.
Sounds good. I guess I should go on vacation more often.
Sure. Yes. It was very exciting.
All right. Any questions for Alderman Model? Then we'll go to number 17, report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board.
Yeah, bid board met on March 1st for our first meeting in March. The financial report, no surprises. We reviewed and approved the bid facade grant program. We had an excellent public presentation of the Main Street reconstruction plans as they stand now. There was a lot of public comment, mostly favorable about the design that's been proposed. I would encourage people to take a look at the website. It is available on the city website, and it shows what we're thinking about at this point. Still time to, you know, get ahold of your Alderman or somebody on the bid board if you have something you'd like to see that's different. So, again, take a look. It looks great. We then, once again, I guess this is getting to be a norm, but we once again put off the report on the roofline lights. I may just make that a standard start with that. And then finally, we welcomed Tracy Surwatt and Paul Zerling to the bid board. They were just appointed, and they're both local and they're both excited to be part of the bid. Any questions?
Yes. I was at the bid board meeting in the audience because I was interested in what's going on with the Main Street development. And looking at the diagram, is, are they, are you guys talking about removing a lot of the planters?
Yes. Yeah, removing...
Is that being met with any disdain?
No. I mean, there's a desire to maintain some green space.
Yeah.
But the planters tend to not be where we need them. And so one of the things that's been talked about is using these cast concrete mobile things that you can put somewhere and then move them somewhere else.
Are those not indicated on the graph?
They're not indicated.
Okay, so there may be more green than is indicated there?
Yeah.
It looks like not enough to me personally, but that's one of the things that I just, just reaction from my clients about downtown is almost always related to the amount of flowers during the summer, the flowers and stuff. So, it is a concern.
What, that there's not enough, or there's...
There's not enough, yeah. Potentially. I may be misreading the diagram, so.
Yeah, one of the things that, and again, this is, the plans are not carved in stone or concrete at this point.
That's why I mentioned it, yeah.
Yeah, but one of the, one of the things that has been brought up is, you know, could baskets be part of whatever the lighting standard happens to be?
Mm-hmm.
So there are still lots of decisions to make.
Yeah.
Like I said, this is by no means carved in concrete.
It otherwise looked great. I mean, we're adding like 30, 31 stalls or something like that?
Um, 30, 36, I thought, and more. 36 and 49.
Oh, is it? Okay. Anyways, a bunch more, yeah.
There's several areas where they're going to have daytime loading zones and nighttime parking. So, things like bars that need the parking at night, there'll be more spaces available.
It's wonderful. I'm otherwise super excited about that. Thank you.
And some of the places where it's, you know, kind of iffy, you know, you have to kind of hope that you get to the place where you make a turn before the other guy does. You know, some of those things are going to, going to get re-engineered, so you won't have quite that much.
That's awesome.
But I'm excited. I can't wait for it to happen.
Awesome. Any other questions for Alderman Allen? Then last but not least, a report by Alderman Kayler regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Park Rec Commission met on February 24th. We had a presentation by Laura Sein with Play by Design to go over the design for the All Abilities Playground. That group was in attendance and shared some of their fundraising efforts. We've got a ways to go on that, but the final design looks great, so that'll come here eventually. We approved tonight the MOA with Trails Edge. We had approved that last week. And then we made a bunch of special event approvals. Fiesta Latina Saturday, May 21st at Regner. Obviously, the farmer's market for 24 Saturdays from May 21st to October 29th downtown. 14 nights of music on Main, Tuesdays or Thursdays from June 2nd to September 1st. That's our 17th consecutive year. Regner Rocks, six nights at Regner Park. Column Scholarship Run on August 4th at Riverside. Wheels on Main, September 4th downtown. Wisconsin Riders Pig Roast, September 10th at Regner. Abigail's Race of Endurance, September 25th at Regner. Homegrown Music Concert, July 10th at Regner. West Bend Schools Foundation Concert on August 20th at Regner. That puts 11 different events being held at Regner Park this summer, 39 different nights or days downtown, one at Riverside. And we also had donations of $1,250 towards a mud run from River Shores Chiropractic, and $5,000 from Early Riser Kiwanis for the library build out. So, that's all I got.
Sounds great. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Aunt Randy, was there any Ninjan Mud Run this year?
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that.
Yeah, we had $1,250 donation for it. I do not have the date for that yet. That wasn't as part of our approvals. We've got more coming next meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm guessing that one will be coming up. But it is planned, yes. And they do have a date. I just, off the top of my head, don't remember. So, I apologize.
Alderman?
Can I just make one brief addition to my report?
Yeah, sure.
April 2nd, vote. It's election. And because of that, the bid board meeting will be using the newly provided facilities in the basement of the library with the recreation facility. So, that's where we'll be meeting on April 2nd at 7:30 in the morning. April 5th?
Oh, April 5th.
April 5th, yeah.
Got it. Any other questions for Alderman Kayler? Or how about any other announcements? Then, having no further business for the County Council, adjourn by to call the chair. Have a good night.